Hey. Thank you, sir.
I love you.
Thank you.
You're eating my baked beef jerky.
John, if you want a water in the back there, Jeff, if you want a water.
No.
When everybody's ready, I'll start. You guys are all ready. You play your own music. Okay, when everybody's ready, I'll start. Everybody good? Okay, here we go. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven fifteen P. M. Apologize for running a little late. We had some difficulties with our live streaming and we know that's valuable to a lot of residents. If you did miss the recreation committee meeting, I know Mr. Spitznagle on the committee recapped it in part of the finance meeting, but it was also recorded and you're welcome to come up and get the DVD. So it was recorded along with the finance committee and this meeting. So it is, it was recorded too, if you would like to view that. Okay, roll call. Jennifer Allen.
Here.
Mary Brenner Miller.
Here.
Fred Nielsen.
Here.
Raymond Whedon.
Present.
Brian Spitznagle.
Here.
All of council here, along with our law director, Mr. Montello, myself, the mayor, Don Colgraf. Our fiscal officer is not here. I did receive, along with all of council, an email at one forty-five saying due to illness, she might not be here tonight. So I'd like to make that point. Okay, any comments related to agenda items? Also, our chief of police is here tonight. Sorry about that, Stan. Not used to you being here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Jennifer.
Just want to be sure, the Rita rules and regulations, that does need to be passed before the beginning of the year, correct?
Yes, and we'll kind of talk about that a little bit. I mean, talk what we'll go through legislation. I'd like to see, it'd be nice, council president, if we could get the TIPS passed and temporary appropriations, as we talked about earlier, and Rita, every, everything here on. We'll go through the legislation. Item A is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen. That's the draft tip, otherwise known as Ford Innovation East, which is the former Ford Motor property. I know we did put it on for first reading.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Jennifer.
My understanding was we put that on for first reading and we had to give fourteen days notice to the Bedford City school system, even though all of these tips are non-school tips. But my understanding is that we need to pass all of these tips this year for it to be, take effect of the lowest property value available this year.
Yes.
And that property value has already increased on the draft, if not some of the other properties too. So, yes, I would also ask for the tips most definitively to be passed next week at the special council meeting.
The, um, thank you. And also with that said, as you know, um, the administration and council, our consultant, Matt Stowinski, who we retain to help with these tips, is suggesting that also, um, and our law solicitor and our finance and all of us. So I appreciate that, uh, council president. So the first one is, the twenty twenty-two dash thirteen is Ford Innovation East. So if we can, yep, put that on for suspension next week, that will be great, but I'll have it on the legislation. Any questions related to that? Okay, now we have ordinance, uh, item B, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen. That's the NPK addition. Other very good business in the village. Everything relates the same way. Our guidance was to pass that this year, as stated. And then we have item C, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen, the Smith and Obie tip. Just to council, and I, I know everybody's aware, but just to any residents that are watching the live stream, the planning commission did approve the, uh, plans for the new addition for Smith and Obie. They approved the exterior, the base, basic package, um, and, um, I think it looks real nice. I think it's going to be in addition to our corner there, certainly going to help out the business. I think it's going to make the corner more attractive and I think we're really moving in the right direction there. So we're looking forward to them breaking ground here soon, maybe after the first of the year, after the holiday. So that would be the same thing for suspension. Bless you. Any questions, um, related to the tips from anybody that's here or anybody that's watching the live stream?
Nothing online right now.
Okay. I know we have, you know, we put on first reading, we've been talking about it. We had our council here to, uh, explain them. We also had a morning meeting with the mayor. Mr. Jordan explained it pretty well. Awesome. Okay, we have item D. That's the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. That's the temporary appropriations for twenty twenty-three. Before this meeting, we had a finance meeting, which was livestreamed too. Um, we went through that. We need more information. So we plan on having a finance meeting. The finance committee, council, is going to have a meeting before the council meeting next week, um, to go over that and see what council's pleasure is with that. And then we have item E, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine, the Rita rules and regulations. That is part of, we, uh, council did pass, uh, accepting, um, Rita as our, uh, collection agent for our payroll tax. Uh, just some clarification, I know, um, and it's something Angela can touch base on in the finance meeting and also in the council meeting. You know, you hear different things, um, you know, about why did, you know, we go this direction. I think, council did a great job, along with the administration, to review it and had Rita here. We also had, I had Rita at the morning meeting with the mayor. Um, I know from my standpoint why I supported it and I've been at both ends of the spectrum. Um, when we did go to, left Rita and went to, uh, to the outside, I mean, to ourselves, to collect it ourselves, we felt we could do a better job, job collecting it, uh, focus more on some of the businesses. We had a bigger department at that time. Um, our fiscal officer, tax administrator, was very versed in in-house collections. Um, and it worked out well at that time. But Rita has changed. They, they're much larger. Uh, they have the newest and the greatest software. Because of the number of communities they have, they have access to federal records, which we don't have as a municipality, but as we stand alone. So they can collect taxes from a lot of the businesses. They see their, their payroll. Um, and I think moving forward, and I think council recognized that too, and that's why they voted to do it, um, with the businesses, especially Ford Innovation East. Uh, we want to collect the payroll tax that the village deserves from all the businesses. Um, and the most important thing, I, I think there's this misconception out there that I'm hearing, is to the taxpayer, all of us here, um, the rate is the same. You know, we, you know, you're, you're going to pay your two and a half percent whether Rita collects it, whether the village collects it, or whatever. That doesn't change. Um, and so I, I, I actually think for the village, I think it's going to be a good, good thing and we'll be able to, um, I think Rita will be a little more effective. So I think it was one of those changes. Uh, very few communities, there's a few communities left, um, but most of them have already converted back to, uh, to Rita. I don't know if anybody wants to talk about that. I just, I hear some things and I thought this is a good forum to kind of clear them up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yes, Jennifer.
The amounts that it would cost the village, um, to pay Rita for collecting the taxes that have numerous resources, more so than we could afford, we wouldn't be able to hire one employee for that dollar amount. So that's the most important thing. And one employee would not be able to do the same thing, um, that Rita can with all of their resources. That being said, just in the, uh, the resolution here, there's just a few typos. So if we have those corrected before next week's council meeting on the ordinance for the, or rather the resolution for Rita, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine. The third, whereas, there is a couple of blanks that should have been resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five on September twenty-seventh. And then in section one, have you gotten it yet, yeah?
No.
Yeah, a little further.
That's okay. John, you're getting them, right?
Okay, and then in section one.
He has to do the legislation.
There is the second to last line. It says, resolution twenty twenty-two dash five. That's not correct. I believe that should have been the, again, the Rita, which was twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five.
Get those straightened out.
Get those fixed ahead of time.
Those are for the, the actual legislation's been passed for that. That's just, this is a, like a housekeeping thing, the rules and regulations. Um, we're already moving forward. The residents should be getting their, um, welcome package. I heard that some have. I know I have one at my house. I don't know if anybody else has. Um, so we did have, uh, one of the representatives at the morning meeting with the mayor, um, and Matt, he did a very good job explaining it to at that time. So any questions on any of the ordinances or that resolution? So those will all be on the council agenda. Okay, the only thing I got for other business that could be on the council, we have the cyber insurance, which you're aware of. We're waiting on our tech here, our computer service to, uh, give some of that information to, um, our insurance carrier to kind of get that straightened out. So that is one of those pieces. So I know that there's a possibility that the cyber insurance legislation could be on there. That's about the only thing that I'm aware of. Uh, Mr. Montello, anything else that you would think that would be on there? Oh, right, right, right. Yeah, we'll have that, but nothing for next week I'm talking. Okay. Anybody? Any questions from the audience here that's here?
Got nine viewers.
Good.
Here, Colgraf.
Yes.
I just had a, a comment, uh, as it relates to especially the draw, um, not the draw, but all of the tip legislations.
Yes.
They were, uh, introduced, you know, about a month ago at, at our, you know, although we have not, we will not have three full readings and we will be putting this up for suspension at our next meeting. I think it would be beneficial to us as well as our, our residents that after the, uh, an ordinance or a resolution is introduced, that the person's name, council person's name that introduced it and the date, maybe goes on the next, uh, edition that comes out. So it's on record that it was introduced, the first reading on just say, November the third. So although we don't have three full readings, we've discussed it in multiple C O Ws afterwards. So then it, it does, you can see that there has been multiple discussions since it was, it's not just, you know, although it's for suspension, it's not just dropped on, on, on our residents at, at spur of the moment. I just think it's a good procedural piece, just that we know who, who introduced it and when.
Mr. Whedon, I, I know in the journal, we put like all the legislation, you know, each and we put whether it's first reading or, or suspension too, but we can, you know, we can do more.
Yeah, we, we, we reprint these every, you know, each season.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I, I got you. I'm here on the agenda. Yep, it's not a problem.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Last week, I'm sorry, are we in other business still?
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Go ahead.
Last week, we had an information committee meeting on the sixth, and that committee consists of myself as the chair, Jennifer Allen, and Fred Nielsen. And I did email them draft minutes. So tonight I would like to ask for, uh, us as a committee to accept those minutes so I can finalize them and send them to the village, if they would like to do that.
Well, my, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
My understanding was that it wasn't a draft. It was the full minutes. We just needed to.
It's the full minutes. It's, yeah, it's not approved. That's why I call it a draft. It's not the approved minutes.
No, and I believe I responded to you with an email back with that. So I'm fine with that. If Fred is, then I'd like to make a motion to accept the information meeting minutes from.
The sixth.
December sixth.
Second.
Okay, so, uh, I will reflect that. Uh, Jennifer Allen made the motion and Fred Nielsen seconded the motion to accept the minutes of the information committee meeting on twelve six. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Jennifer Allen, aye. Fred Nielsen, aye. And myself, aye. So three A's approved. And Mr. Mayor, I'll have those over to the village, um, tomorrow.
Sounds good.
And, um.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Jennifer.
There was another recommendation that was going to be put before council.
For the.
From the rec meeting, wasn't there?
From the rec meeting?
Mm-hmm.
The, yes. Uh, I had discussed it in the finance committee meeting, but for the whole of council, um, we, as a committee, with Mr. Calman here, in talking about the construction of that lower asphalted area there, he stated that it would be much better and a much better, um, for the workers. And it would make it a cleaner, much more nicer area. If we took that fence down, they would be able to, and I'm talking about the entire periphery fence of that lower area, take that down. It is heaved in pretty much every location, whether it's a pole, uh, from frosting and all that stuff. And they would smoothen that, that entire area out. And so doing the batting cages, which are in the northeast corner, would be removed. We wouldn't use those. Those have not been used for the last few years. There is electricity for the batting machines that would be kept there. There would be boxes placed flush with the asphalt for future, uh, for a future batting cage if we needed it, or anything that required electricity out there. That was his recommendation. The, uh, committee thought that was a good idea. Mr. Nielsen thought that was a good idea and he's more versed in the baseball aspect of this than anybody here. Uh, he thought that that was, uh, the appropriate way to go. Not putting words in his mouth, but, uh, so that was a recommendation from the committee and that's what we would like to bring forward, uh, to all of council as we move forward through that process.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just like to expound on that a little bit. Uh, we had, we talked about removing this, this fence. Again, it, it'll make it much easier to pave it and it'll, it'll look much neater and cleaner. Uh, at some point, we did talk about if we need a batting cage again, we could, we could, uh, come up with something, but it doesn't look like here in the near future that we're going to need that cage. Uh, we had no teams last year. And hopefully with, uh, a lot of the young people moving in the village and seeing more and more kids, especially at the, uh, the Christmas party, the tree lighting and, and the, uh, Santa delivery, uh, hopefully the, that we'll have baseball teams in the future. But right now, I can't see, uh, keeping that batting cage there for, for no reason.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor Colgraf and Chairman Spitznagle, just had a, just for clarification, so we're, uh, we're talking about, we're talking about the lower area, removing all the fencing or just the half of the fencing? Can you clarify?
Yes, clarifying that, Mr. Calvin, uh, Calman wants to remove all of the periphery fencing because it is all heaved. And the bottom of, if you walk that area, uh, myself and Mr. Nielsen with Mr. Calman walked it several times. I'm sure the mayor, well, I know the mayor's been down there and he's walked it. Um, it's, it's heaved and every pole is heaved up. And every piece of fence underneath there is, is curled up. It's buckled. And it would make it a much nicer area, finishing the edges off. And Mr. Calman thinks that, uh, without a fence there, it would make it, right now, there's only one small door for, for exit and entry. It would make it a true multi-use area where people could come and go from different locations. Um, and, and as Mr. Nielsen said, if we do need in the future an area to be fenced in, um, then we could, that fencing is very expensive. We could apply for, you know, another grant to, uh, get fencing. Uh, several years ago, I applied for the Cleveland Indians grant, which Mr. Nielsen walked into the Cleveland Indians. And, uh, uh, we got fencing for the baseball. So it is doable. Uh, but, uh, I think, I think it's a good idea to do it at this time since we're redoing the, the entire area. Now, the upper area for the tennis courts, that fencing is still good. So our service department, Rob, said that they would, uh, be willing to paint that and all the, the cost would be just in the paint. Um, so as long as we're, we're making the area look nice, why have a really horribly looking and functional fence? It's really not functional, as Mr. Nielsen said, in the, when the batting cages were up, when they were being used, the balls would go roll underneath the fence and they have to go out and get the balls. So that's where it stands right now.
And then the other, the other question is, so that entire lower area is to be repaved? Is that what was?
The entire east portion, the west portion is good. So they would make everything flat and do the, uh, it's my understanding, the edges, uh, flush, you know, around the entire periphery edges. So the edges, because right now, if you go down there and look at the, the edges where the, the poles are and they're all heaved up. So that would be all flush, right?
That's the way, that's the way explaining.
So then, so then just, okay, that answers my question. And I just have one more. This is a procedural question, Mayor. So once the committee or council, uh, or the committee recommends a council, council votes, uh, and then it's still an administrative function, whether or not you, the mayor and the, and the service director, just going to say, we're, council's not directing this at that point. This is really still up to you guys how you, just a procedural question that.
Yeah, but, but, um, Mr. Whedon, if, uh, an item goes through the committee, the committee approves it and council approves it, and council approves the funding for it administratively, I'm, I'm sure we would support it and move forward. I, I, you know, uh, I think we all have the same goal and that is to, uh, give as much recreation to our residents as we can, um, all within our budget. Uh, and so, you know, as you mentioned earlier, uh, you'd like to see the funding end of it. So you approve the funding end of it. You've had meetings on it. I certainly don't want anyone wasting their time or anything, but yeah, I, and I'm, you know, uh, I'm involved in it too and, um, I'll have my input or whatever too. And I, I think it's going in a good direction. I, I think it's great that the committee's looking at it. I think it's great. We received the grant. We're, and add, maybe we can add more than eight thousand dollars. That would be, that would be nice. You know, maybe we can do a little more there. I know Mr. Calman and, and the service department has talked about self-performing more things up there, um, which is going to help out. But yeah, to answer your question, I certainly would love to approve a project like that or be part of it, which I am. I, I think it's a, it's a good thing. I'd like to see the existing stuff remain where people are using, along with added enhancements, so more people can use the facility.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As it stands now, the upper tennis area, we will redo, uh, it will be two tennis courts along with two pickleball courts with two nets that are adjustable for each game. And the lower area, then with the repavement, where the east area is repaved, again, that could be future use for a multi-use, whether it's a batting cage, there is room there to, uh, put the, uh, two pickleball courts, one on the east side I'm talking about. Um, and we, we, the committee discussed even somehow moving the basketball court over, although there's not really enough room for a full legal half court. Um, there are things maybe that Rob could do or we could do, we could look at. But it's a fluid thing, uh, for future, uh, uh, future improvements and stuff. And, uh, we're excited about it.
Good. We just need to have warm weather, right? Got to get through this winter.
It's going to get colder before it gets warmer.
Yeah. But that's good. I'm glad the meeting went well and things are going in a good direction. Go, go ahead, Jeff. Do you want me to read them or are you going to read them?
We have two questions. We have two questions from Ms. Lee Nielsen. The first one is, is there a schedule to begin planning for the village? This was discussed last spring, and I understood this would be considered. Thank you. And then additionally, I would like to hear about the village-wide plans for the recreation, given the $48,000 from the state and the $8,000 from the village.
Hey, Colgraf?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Weeden.
I can attempt to address the first question from Ms. Nielsen. And I did say that I would reach out to the Kewa County Planning Department, which I have. I'm, however, I'm still waiting back for a follow-up communication from the county. So, I mean, and then that would be information that would be brought to the village. It's not that I'm, I'm a planning director. It's not that. But I did say that I would reach out and try to make that connection, which I have, just waiting for return communication from the county.
And what was the second question?
I think we explained some of that, but if you want.
Additionally, I would like to hear about the, which I don't understand, but she says the village-wide plans for the recreation, giving the $48,000 from the state and $8,000 from the village.
Yeah.
Maybe she's already received her answer, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you for your question. We just, we had a recreation meeting to discuss that $48,000 grant here at 5 o'clock. That was recorded. Unfortunately, we didn't have video for it. Apparently, our one connection was bad.
We did still live.
But we had audio. Yeah, so
And we do have recording.
If you want the detail of that, you can review that. We did go over the application, or it's not the application, it's the fillable guide that we had to complete, which we did complete that. What's required left is the mayor's initials on one section and Joe Gelati, our engineer's signature on an EPA section. And that'll be sent to the state. They will then send us a contract, which the mayor will sign along with a certification by our legal counsel, Mr. Montello. And at that point, we will be on our way. The the scheduling, January, February is engineering part. The whole thing's going to be done sometime in June. Bidding to be done in early spring and two months in for construction, but it's not going to take two months, but we have to rely on the spring weather, so to get good days. So that's it. The, Mr. Kalman did come up with the, the timeline and the cost structure, which was reviewed by Mr. Gelati.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Nielsen clarified, I think. She said, does the plan include the use of the event center? And I, if I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
I think there's some confusion. This $48,000 plus the additional $8,000 that the village is putting in, is a grant that we applied for strictly for use at TG Young Park with a very specific plan of redoing the tennis courts so that tennis courts could be used again, pickleball courts could be used there, and the lower lot could be repaved also for possible other uses. That's all spoken for, that $48,000 and that $8,000. And we did have hour and a half meeting, as, as Councilman Spitznagle said, but that grant has nothing to do with the event center. We are strictly talking about this plan at TG Young Park.
Correct. And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For Mrs. Nielsen, I am planning on having another recreation committee meeting in January, sometime after we get reports from our finance as to the rentals and all that stuff, and to talk about the event center with the rentals and some, I've had some suggestions by residents with possible talk about rule changes and things like that, how we rent it, not to the residents, but some of the rules for renting. And I know at one point, we had discussed having a person there at all of the events that hasn't occurred yet, so we will revisit that issue also. So that'll be sometime in January. I don't have a particular date yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Nielsen.
Just, just to clarify, the $48,000 that Mr. Spitznagle put in for and was granted plenty of hard work can only be used for the designated area at the park. It cannot be used for anything but the tennis courts and the basketball court down below. And as far as the striping, the painting, that's, that's all included in that $48,000. It can, it can only be used for, for that at the park.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
I have one more comment from Ms. Lee Nielsen says, thank you. I am interested in a larger village-wide recreation plan to include all recreation within the village. I think we've clarified.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, as, as part of the rec committee, moving forward into the spring, we'll have meetings with Natalie Buck concerning the entire recreational programming for the year. Sure, absolutely. And if anybody has any ideas, suggestions, I think that's going well taken is the line dancing. That's apparently doing good, doing, doing well. But if anybody has any suggestions, please forward them on. That's what we're here for.
Any other comments under other business? I do, I did mention it earlier in the finance meeting. I did receive this afternoon at 3:30 from Mr. Gelati, just an FYI. He had a call today with ODOT regarding possible use of safety funding for the Northfield Road sidewalk project. He's awaiting feedback from ODOT to let us know if the project would qualify. There's actually two possible safety funding applications, but there's nothing for us to do at this time. So that would be great to add to that $250,000 and to get, you know, get that complete with maybe no cost to the village. With that said, also just kind of an update, if you've seen that the Ford Innovation Center East, they have been really moving forward, probably start to see the walls going up soon here. And that's when you'll know it's really coming out of the ground here. So it's a lot of excitement about things here in Ohio, and especially here, right in, right in our backyard in Walton Hills, so. I have nothing else under other business. Does anybody else have before I ask for adjournment? And I have a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment in the COW meeting for December 13th.
Second, by Mary Brenner Miller. Vote on the motion. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Mary Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Weenan?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 7:53 PM. Thank you, everybody. Okay, everybody have a good week. Let's see what we got here.
I'm just waiting a second here until I see, so I know that.
Yeah, it's like a little delay, right?
Right. So it should be good now.